Good evening and welcome to the July 13th Committee of the Whole Meeting for 2022. And we are starting at 6:00 PM and I'll declare the meeting officially open. At this time, I would like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councillors tonight? Seeing, hearing none, administration, do you have anything tonight emergent? Nope, thank you, and I'm looking for a motion. Deputy Mayor Peterson.
I would move that we confirm the July 13th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Agenda as presented.
Thank you, and you've all heard the motion, all in favor? And that motion is carried. Oh, good evening councillor Langmead, I forgot to, I looked down and you weren't there, and then I looked up and there you are. It's like magic.
No worries.
It's like magic. We move on to the confirmation of minutes 4.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for June 8th, 2022. Deputy Mayor Emeritus Montgomery.
Thank you. I will move that, where is it here? That council adopted June 8th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented.
Thank you for that, all in favor? And that motion is carried. We move on to item 5, Business 5.1, Policy 3901, Design Standards and Procedures for Development and Subdivision Infrastructure. Which I believe is a heather's pick from Indigo Books. Sorry Ethan, good evening Ethan and welcome.
Nearly as long. Good evening your worshiping council. I bring tonight the new Engineering Design and Construction Standards Manual, which is being developed in-house and is intended to replace Policy 3901. It is the recommendation of administration that Policy 3901 be rescinded and allow this document to be managed and maintained by the Infrastructure Department going forward. Current Policy 3901 was adopted in 2003 and has since become outdated. The new standards has been nearly 12 months in the making and has included consultation with the development community and their engineering consultants, one of whom was willing to provide multiple hours of their time to provide valuable input and ask some meaningful questions. If council desires, Policy 3901 will be brought back at the July 20th meeting to be rescinded. I do have a copy of the new Engineering Design and Construction Standards Manual in front of me if there's any specific clarifications, but otherwise I'd be happy to hear your questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wiley.
Very impressive, it looks awesome. I was interested in just hearing more about the process to get the feedback. You talked about outreach and connection with the development community. Do you want to go into that a little bit more?
Yeah, for sure. So through the chair to you councillor, we reached out to all of our current developers, so that would be Edgefield, The Ranch, Lakewood, Wildflower. I believe at that time Coldwell Ranch was still a thought. So all of those developers, as well as their engineering consultants. We gave them kind of the general overview of what we're doing. We sent them the draft copy as it existed at that time and just asked for general input. We weren't asking for anything specific. If there's a portion you like, if there's a portion you don't like, what have your experiences provided, that sort of thing. We got back responses from as much as a simple thank you, you know, for involving them, but they had no comments too. Like I mentioned, we had one engineering consultant who sat in this room here beside us for about three hours and went through each section, comments that they had, those sort of things.
Well, and even really the simple thank you is a massive amount of communication. It means, looks good.
Thank you councillor Wiley, we'll go now to councillor Montgomery.
Thank you. Yeah, great, great work on this Ethan, and I'm really glad to hear that you went to the lengths you did to get feedback. My question just has to do with warranty periods and did you think it'd be like tougher to get like kind of longer warranty periods than those? Or are those kind of just the industry standard, I guess?
Your worship and to you councillor, those are the standard through most municipalities. I do know that if we extend it, we would be looking at pushback, for sure. I'm trying to think of the specific example, I believe it was storm ponds, if I remember correctly. We had a conversation about extending the warranty on those too, I think it was five years. And we did get a lot of comment back on that about, you know, why and what's the reason and those sort of things. And what we were also kind of pushing for is, well, at the end of the five-year period, let's get a full, basically a cleaning of that pond. But then, how realistic is that? You know, it'd be nice to have, but what, how do you do it? And what are the interruptions in doing that? And what are the, you know, legalities? Like when you're talking a storm pond, you've got to involve Alberta Environment and those sort of things. So we did go down that route a little bit, but based on the feedback that we got, sticking with what is standard or common throughout other municipalities is what we thought was best.
Okay, yeah, otherwise, yeah, it looks great, and even that, that's fine too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, former deputy mayor. Current deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. My question kind of follows a little bit from councillor Montgomery's and it could be absolutely entrenched in ignorance. But it relates to page 62 of the document under General and Bulk Water specifically, related to storm ponds. And when I was going through this, you know, one of the things we talk, certainly you can make an agreement with the town, but I'm referencing the group that's come before council, not under our current CAO's term, but in two previous ones, talking about using bulk water for flooding and storm ponds and so on. And so, I'm wondering if there's ever, if there's ever something in this in an addendum or something else that would reference that, that would somehow tie this in? And I don't need an answer today, at all. It's just, it's just something I wondered when I'm looking through it and it may not have a relationship whatsoever. The other thing that I wondered Ethan, when you, when you, when you put together a package of this depth in terms of procedures for development and infrastructure, do you ever talk about emergency management? Do you ever reference emergency management to this? Or is it just understood that they are very separate? So, so do you move from one to the other? You know, I know you have all kinds of reference to road closures and structures around this, but you know, in terms of tying it into an overall emergency management plan, do you ever reference it in something like this?
Your worship and you councillor, to a point. So a lot of the references in this document are back to our master service studies. So when I think of emergency management, I think of access and making sure that emergency services can get to where they need to go. And so like our transportation master plan takes into account road widths and road sizes and turning radiuses and those sort of things. And those are also items that we look at for each individual development. And then separate from this document, but one we definitely reference many times is a City of Calgary access standard, right? So like with the latest phase of The Ranch and making sure that they had a secondary access because they've exceeded those number of houses from one access. So we do indirectly reference it in this document. I don't, there's definitely not a specific section on it, but yes, we definitely take that into account.
It just, it never, it never had occurred to me in its fullness until I saw the detail on this plan. You know, and I know we do emergency management, we've had them in front of us very, very recently. But when I was, when I was thinking about the plan that, that they're talking about in a, in their presentation to us, quite, quite high level, considering who they were speaking to. And then, you know, when I look at this and some of the other undertakings that we're facing with climate change and environmental concerns, that there's probably something, I guess that's more an administration CAO question doubt for down the road. But, and that just, just like what a document, engineers, they just never fail to leave me in awe. The thing that I liked the most about this though, that made me laugh out loud, was the term and the terminology, vegetation community. I loved it. It was a great job, thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. Ethan, I have three questions actually, if I could. I'm looking at page 31 and it talks about the paved or interlocking stone walkways, fencing, play equipment, blah, 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 are all in accordance with the current City of Calgary specifications. That part I get, I understand, but is, I wasn't able to find anything in this and maybe you can, I'm going to use one of Denise's words, elucidate on this. Not bad. Not so much the standards, but is there anything that we have in writing to ensure that paved pathways are put in by the developer as their subdivision is being built out? So that it's not left, like sometimes I felt some of our subdivisions haven't had the pathways and we've had to go back in and put them? So do we have something in to protect the town that way?
Sir, your worship, what page was that?
Thirty-one of 157.
Do you have the page number in the bottom right?
Twenty-three, sorry. And it is section 2.11.4. It's CC landscaping municipal school reserve sites. And in, it just talks about landscaping for reserved parcels under one and it talks about the paved or interlocking stone walkways, fencing, play equipment amenities are in accordance with Calgary specifications, which I get. But I'm just concerned, do we, do we have something in our own process to ensure that if a new subdivision comes on, that they're also putting in pathways?
Yes, so your worship, I would kind of separate, this book would be how to build it.
Okay.
You know, or to what standard it needs to be built to.
Okay.
And then separate from that would be, I'll say Chucks Department. You know, in terms of when we get that new application and here's what we require. We require an MR, you know, and in certain cases that MR means to include a playground, it needs to include a pathway, it needs to include irrigation. And that's the coordination between the development department, the operations department, the infrastructure department, and making sure that those things happen going forward. We're well aware that there's many parts of town that don't have those amenities and we're adding them as we can.
Yeah.
But we're ensuring that going forward it is included.
Perfect, that's a great answer and it has relieved my concerns. Easy question, it talks again about, in another section, it talks about pipe also being according to the City of Calgary standard specifications. Just in our old, in our old subdivisions and I'm thinking of Willow Drive now, what would we find as far as old pipe? Is it cast iron and what are we doing for new piping?
Yes, so your worship, in the case of Willow Drive, it's cast iron.
Okay.
Other parts of town, we have ductile iron, we have asbestos concrete, and then we have PVC. Those are kind of our common ones. We pretty much exclusively use PVC now with some exceptions. I do know part of our East Calgary Regional Waterline is actually concrete, but concrete, not asbestos concrete. So PVC is generally the standard, but there are exceptions to that.
Okay, well that was easy. And my third and last question, on that same page, page 23, it, in section, it's a lowercase b. It says, "When two sides of a development phase have been constructed adjacent to a park site, the park must be developed in its entirety prior to any further building development occurring." So do we follow that guideline here in Strathmore?
We will going forward.
Okay.
I would say, so to take that, you know, we don't want a developer to skip their recreation amenities. Right? They could defer it and say, phase one, okay, we're not building the park yet. But by the time phase two comes around the other side of what's supposed to be a park, the park must be done.
Okay, good, that also reassures me, thank you. Councillor Montgomery.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify something, I guess, this is intended for new developments? Like this wouldn't, would this apply to an existing residence, for instance?
We will reference it because we want to keep consistent standards.
Yeah.
But it is meant for new developments primarily. When it comes to older developments and doing rehabilitation, we've got to balance between what are we replacing and what is existing. You know, in the case of replacing a pipe, well, what this says to use for pipes and the methods and the standards to follow, absolutely, we'll continue to do that. But in terms of, if we're not replacing the entire road structure, we're going to have to look for a more unique situation based on what our engineers are suggesting, rather than what this document says. So it's balancing between what you're replacing completely and what you're kind of bringing back to its current condition.
Okay, like one thing that stuck out to me, for instance, was like the dimensions of driveways, which is found on page 56 or 64 of the document. And it just mentions that, for instance, that the maximum length of a driveway shall be up to the front entrance of the main building. So that's, I guess, so if somebody has a house, for instance, and their driveway already extends past the front of their building, then do they need to get permission from the town to pave that, for instance?
You're talking, so someone say already has a gravel pad?
Yeah.
And that's the access to their garage per se?
Well, so my house, for instance, like my house, the driveway extends basically to the back of the house, but then it stops at the backyard.
Yep.
So, but it's gravel right now and I've been thinking about putting concrete in. So what would the process be for something like that?
In those situations, we would look at what's already there. A lot of the intent around this one is to not get a completely concrete-covered lot, right? So in your scenario, we've got gravel there already. So we're going from a semi impermeable surface to a basically impermeable surface. And so the change in the amount of stormwater coming off of that pad is minimal. But if, for say you had a front yard that was completely grass right now and you came to the town and said, I want to pave my entire front yard, we would likely say no.
I see, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you councillor Montgomery, councillor Mitzenner.
To Ethan through the chair, just a question, do we as a town have the option to sell our cast iron or scrap metals? Or does the contractor take that away and benefit from the cost?
Typically, the contractor's responsible for disposal, so whatever method they choose.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
On page 46 of the report, on the, on the very bottom paragraph under design, where it talks about where no watershed, sub watershed planning or impact study's been completed, there are policies that the town follows. And so, so in an area like Strathhaven where, where there was no, no study done, and can you, can you tell me how, how the town, under the MDP and other related, how they deal with that sub watershed now? Or how they would propose to deal with it in a peak flow?
So in the case of Strathhaven, like we've got primarily overland flow right now.
Yep.
And we do, we are aware of some issue locations. So what we would look at is installing a minor system, so the pipes underneath the ground for stormwater. But then we've got to look at, you know, how does that impact downstream? Because downstream may not have been designed to collect all of that stormwater. So there's many steps within.
So this would be, this would be an example of something that, that you might take on?
It would be a large task.
Right, over time.
And one where I would probably start with basically creating that stormwater plan.
And identifying the problem areas.
Again, right? Because like I said, we've got to look not only at the community and we may only have a street, for example, that we want to improve. But when we look at that street, we have to look at the community and then when we look at the community, we have to look at the entire system. So what sounds like a simple, let's just put a drain in the street over there, can compound very quickly.
It's a question that we get a lot, you know, around Strathhaven. And, and so it's good to know that there are options and that it's something that has been deeply considered and appreciated.
The one benefit of Strathhaven is we have two ditches on two sides. Right, and that's where most of the stormwater is intended to go. So sometimes creating solutions to help it get there are the simplest.
Just a question that interests, so on the north and east sides of Strathhaven, where that, where those ditches flow, is that into the north, the north dispersment or is it so?
I'm quite confident it goes south.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councillor Langmead and then councillor Wiley.
Thank you, your worship. Hi Ethan, I just have a, a couple of questions for you and they're related. I know that many people in this council campaigned on affordable housing and creating affordable housing in Strathmore and increasing our supply. And then, and through my research, you know, one thing that I've learned about it is that one, one strategy for tackling, you know, a shortage of affordable housing is to help kind of reduce the red tape around new developments and find creative ways to help things move forward. Was that considered at all in, in the preparation of this document?
Your worship and to you councillor, I would say absolutely. We, we lots of times defer to City of Calgary. And City of Calgary has some great guidelines to follow. But other times, they are much more stringent than maybe they need to be. So in many cases, we looked at what is kind of standard practice in other municipalities? What is the City of Calgary guidelines? What is the Alberta Environment requirement? And balancing between each of those as to which is the best solution for Strathmore. So in some cases, Calgary's guidelines are the best solution for Strathmore, but in other cases, following different guidelines or different recommendations makes more sense for our community.
Excellent, thank you. And then, and just a second related question off of that is that I know one thing that we've kind of talked about in terms of affordable housing is secondary suites and garden, or garden suites. And I noticed that garden suites is mentioned once in the document in terms of driveway length. But there's not much in here about secondary suites or garden suites. And I'm wondering if, if maybe that's to come as we work on, you know, work on what that might look like for Strathmore in the future? Were they considered or is it just not required in this document at this time?
Through you, to you councillor, I feel that it's not really required in this document. In, in terms of, if we've got a separate suite, we would look for both to have their own individual water service, but that doesn't change the size or type of the pipe within the street. And that's what this document focuses on. There are specific situations, like you mentioned driveways for a garden suite, where, you know, we'd have to take that into account. But I think for the most part, a garden suite or a secondary suite is more of a development decision than it is a engineering and infrastructure decision.
Perfect, thank you very much, those were my only questions.
CAO Scobal?
Yeah, just a supplementary comment through the chair. So with garden suites, that sort of thing, the detail around them is really going to be in the land use bylaw. So it's, as, as Ethan said, it's more in the planning and development realm, but.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wiley.
Excellent question Melissa about affordability, my question's connected to that. Are there things in this document that you expect will increase the developers, developers' costs? What are some of the things, I guess, what are some of the big ticket items in this document that will increase costs for the developer and thus increase costs of housing?
Through you, your worship and to you councillor, I can't think of one specific thing where it would be, that's a significant cost, you know what I mean? When we look at, say, the parks item that we were talking about earlier, that's not a new cost to the developer, we're just kind of enforcing when it gets built. When it comes to underground infrastructure, nothing in here is groundbreaking or significantly different than other municipalities. So the pipes in the ground are still the pipes in the ground. Our road widths are not significantly different than anywhere else. They might vary by a half a meter here and there, but not, again, anything that I would foresee a developer saying, no, we're not building in Strathmore, they've got 30-meter wide roads, for example, that's, that's not the case. So I can't think of one item or even two items in here that would be like a big ticket item. I think we've got a lot of little minute changes that over the length of a development probably balance out in the end anyways.
Hence is why in your outreach efforts, some of them just wrote back, thank you, because there was nothing surprising in it.
And it's also where some of them pushed back, like on the warranty item. That's a cost to the developer. Longer we extend the warranties, the longer they have to maintain that item. So, you know, when we got pushbacks on those items, most of their comments where they didn't like something we put in are definitely driven by money.
Were there any of the critiques you got from that one engineer in particular that you left in this document?
There was one and I can't think of it off the top of my head and I apologize.
That's all right.
No, you know what, I'll look back at my notes and if I do find it, I will send a note through to council, share that information, that's not a problem at all.
Okay, my final question comes from having lived here now in a new home development and it's radon. Is there anything in here about radon mitigation? Because apparently we are, it's a major problem. And should it be something that's included that the developers are doing before these developments are finished? Because to do it now as a homeowner after, it's, it's fairly expensive.
Your worship and to you councillor, I'm, that's a building code item. That's not something that's done in here. And I'm not 100% familiar with radon. I mean, I live in a similar area and I have.
Get your radon checked, by the way Ethan.
I have the radon pipe in my basement, but I don't know of a solution that could be done by the developer to avoid the need for the homeowner to not have to do it.
Well, the radon pipe would be the.
Correct, but that's still individual houses, so that's where it falls under the building.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so that would go underneath the.
Yeah, so through the building code, that's, I believe now a requirement.
Oh, it is now?
I believe so, don't quote me on that one, but I believe it is. But like I said, I don't know of a developer solution that would require.
My apologies, I'm still figuring out what's what, sort of like Melissa's question, I was, I didn't realize that. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions or comments for Ethan? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation and your willingness, ability to answer all our questions.
Yeah, and thank you, your worship. I just want to say thank you to my entire department. This was not a one-person job, this was a, the entire department kicked in on this one, especially the help from other departments as well, so thanks to them.
Awesome. We move now to 5.2, Community Standards Amending Bylaw. And Jonathan, you're speaking to this one?
All right, thank you worshiping council. So currently, administration and the town are doing a review of all of our bylaws and policies. During this review, we've identified a couple of gaps that we need to, to fix in short order. We have a lot of bylaws that are, you know, a decade or two old that just need updating. The Community Standards Bylaw kind of fits within this category. So currently, the team here has started to work on the rewrite and hopefully in a future council meeting, we'll bring that much larger bylaw to council for consideration and, and for feedback. But today, we just, we've identified just a small gap within the bylaw itself that we're just bringing an amendment forward to council for, for your guys' consideration and feedback as well. What this amendment would essentially do is it would allow for an appeal process for anyone who's got a notice to pay for the cost of removal of snow and ice. The appeal process would be very similar to other sections of this bylaw in part seven, most notably. And what it would be is that that individual who received the notice would appeal in writing to the CAO. Then the CAO would then respond in return. Pretty straightforward, pretty small amendment. It would just really ease our, a lot of our internal process, make things a little bit easier to deal with during the winter.
Thank you Jonathan, any questions for Jonathan regarding this? I can just make a comment that I had been contacted about snow removal by someone who owned an empty lot in town. And in the phone call with this person, he was erroneously under the impression that the bylaw said we had to warn people after a snow event. And there's, I looked through the bylaw, there is nothing, otherwise we'd be phoning people constantly, hey, it snowed, and that wouldn't work. So that's where, part of this originated. And a question to councillor, councillor, a question to CAO Scobal, will this, will this come to us, when it comes to us, does this help you in the latest situation that, that we've been discussing? Does it give you some leeway?
Certainly, I mean, we're going to look at everyone individually and, and, you know, the circumstances. But certainly that option is there if council approves this, that isn't currently, so.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Montgomery.
So if I, if I wanted to see like another amendment brought back, like for when we approve this, because I presume this is going to be coming back pretty soon?
Hopefully next week, just because, just, just on the snow removal.
Okay, so if I like, if I said, hey, can you guys take this thing out too? You guys would rather wait on that?
Is it a small amendment or is it?
I mean, I just, I was shocked to find out that we, we have something in here about bullying. Not that I'm for bullying obviously, but it, I mean, I'd be surprised if we're equipped to kind of deal with some of what it mentions here about like, you know, electronically transmitted stuff like that. So I, I think at some point in time we'll probably bring that back. The other thing that I just noticed. I guess I didn't clue into it before. So, under offenses for public behavior, it says, "No person shall defecate or urinate in a public place," which, which makes sense for an outdoor public place, but... A public place means any place, this is the definition, means any place to which the public have or are permitted to have access. So, I think that includes like buildings and stuff like that. So, I, I've probably broken that a few times myself.
Which section was that, sorry?
The, it's on page one thirty-seven of the agenda, under offenses. And it just, under number two, it says, "No person shall defecate or urinate in a public place."
And don't change it prior to the rodeo.
That's, that's all I have, though. Thank you.
For sure. So, so I'm sorry, just to kind of sum up here. So, you have questions about the bullying section within the bylaw?
I mean, I, I would like to probably bring that back, like, because I, I believe if we're gonna have something in, you know, in, in a document like this, then it needs to be something that we can enforce. And, and I, I would need to find out, I guess, from administration, what our capacity is to enforce that even.
For sure.
Like, are, you know, are we gonna be, you know, doing deep dives, you know, electronically, you know, like, you know, source where, you know, anonymous, you know, abusive messages are coming from? Are we gonna go that far, that kind of thing? If not, then maybe we shouldn't be, you know, kind of mentioning it in here, I guess.
Thank you, worshiping council.
Sir, when you're ready. Councillor Wiley?
Kind of jumped the gun there. I also had circled bullying, but I'm not interested in doing any other amendments to this bylaw at this time, but you said you'd be bringing a Community Standards Bylaw back to us. I definitely had some red flags. So, the way it says right now is that, and I quote, "To communicate with any person in a way that causes the person to feel bullied." So, that's the very last page of the document, page thirty-one of thirty-one, or one fifty-seven of one fifty-seven. So, yeah, I would, I think in the new Community Standards Bylaw, we would need to seriously consider what we're policing and how we're policing someone's feelings or punishing someone for making a person feel a certain way. Like, if you look at the definition of bullying, you could say, "That person is bullying," and that might be something you could enforce. But to say that it's based on someone's feelings, I, I would have a hard time supporting that in the future bylaw when it comes forward.
So, your worship and council, what we'll do is then, if, if everyone's happy with the bylaw as it currently is, we'll bring it forward next week. And then, I have these notes here, we'll pass on along to the team, and we'll bring you that, that bylaw. Now, I can't promise when that's gonna come forward, just looking at our, our next couple of months, they get pretty busy. We, we have no meetings in August, two meetings in September, and then we're getting to budget cycles and, and all that other fun stuff. So, it'll be within the next couple of months, but we'll, we'll try and work it in there, but no promises as to a date.
Just to be clear, I'm not asking for an amendment soon. I'm just saying, when you bring forward the new community bylaw-
Yeah, for sure.
-to consider those things.
For sure. Well, I'll look into that a little bit further, and if maybe we can sneak in another amendment for next week, but, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jonathan? Seeing none, thank you again, Jonathan, for your presentation.
Thank you.
And that moves us to item six, question and answer period. Any questions? Questions on life, career, career decisions?
Yeah, I have, I have a question.
Oh, I was almost doing it again. Councillor Montgomery?
What are we doing here, you guys? No, actually, I have a question for the CAO. And this is just, I guess, like something that would be for any community, but when the CAO, when, so there's parts of various, like bylaws that we have that say that you need to get permission of the CAO in order to do something. When the CAO wants to do something and needs, you know, like, otherwise would have to ask the CAO, who do they have to go to, to, to get the okay?
So, a member of the Public Contacts Town Hall, is that what you're?
No, like, like, for instance, like if you wanted to get, like, let's say, some sort of-
Oh.
Yeah, like if you wanted to get something done.
I'm really good at chubbling my sidewalk. I'm from the north, so.
Yeah, so, so who, who, who would you go to in the case of needing to get the CAO sign off?
Well, you know, that's a good question. I mean, I, I guess if I was in violation of something and issued a ticket by municipal enforcement, I would either choose to pay it, or I guess, yeah, I would have to seek a, I mean, I don't know, to be honest with-
Well, I don't mean so much that, but like, like, you know, for instance, like to ride a horse in town, you need to get the permission of the CAO. So, do you, can you just give yourself permission to do that, or would you need to-
I guess so, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was kind of wondering.
Okay, any other questions? Then, we have nothing in the closed meeting, and I believe all we need is a motion to adjourn.
So move, your worship?
Oh, we don't need that. I just have to adjourn it, right? So, cut it out, deputy mayor. I declare this meeting adjourned at-